You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 26, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association Special Meeting. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Call this meeting to order. I do see that we have before us some minutes and some financial pieces of information. If everybody want to take a second to look over that, although that's not a part of our discussion this evening, I think it is good to have this in front of us.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, hello. Yes.
What's up, Vice President?
Good, how are you?
We just called a meeting to order and I was just having everyone to take a few seconds to look at the document that's in front of us that Clarence's office has provided. Although it's not on the agenda, it's definitely good information and something that we should be aware of and thinking about. As far as the financial report, as far as the approval of the minutes, all of this will take place at the February meeting.
Hello.
And the monthly financial report and also the director's report again. That is all items I definitely hope that we can still have presented to us in February. So in the sake of time, I want to go ahead and just go back to why we're here tonight. And the floor is open for discussion. We're going to start with our new business.
I don't believe we're...
I don't think we can have, we're talking about the deport reports and stuff now.
This is a, I don't believe, is this a special meeting right here?
Right.
Okay.
So we can't even have these discussions until the...
But the special meeting was called for the...
For these items that's on here. It's set another contract termination.
Yeah, that's it. That's really it.
That's it.
That's really all we're... Really all we're...
The agenda.
Okay. That's why I said we...
If you don't mind, can we just say the pledge first and then go from there? We usually start meetings off with the pledge. I think we need to start off with the pledge and go from there.
I'm not familiar with it, but talk to me, what pledge?
Yeah, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Oh. I've participated in that once. Has anybody else did that?
No.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections? That's the question. All right. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Well, I think, Mr. President, just to cut this meeting and bring it to, to a head. Last week, about seven, 10 days ago, we received a letter from EDCNC requesting that we terminate the... Requesting that they terminate the contract with, with us.
Those are 90-day notice.
Those are 90-day notice. We have asked and requested that we speed up the termination until the beginning of February, that we end the business, end business, have bills mailed out, things are taken care of, and have a clean cut as of February 1st. I believe both sides are comfortable with this separation. We can do it amicably. We can still work together in good faith to grow the city. We still have the same mission, but for us to kind of go out on our own to pursue things and kind of grow the way that our board desires. I don't know if anybody else wants to share, but I think that's what has brought us to this meeting tonight.
I'll move to turn in the contract and move forward.
I second. All in favor? Show of hands.
Oh, take it just...
Aye.
Show of hands.
Aye.
Nay? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Let the record show that the termination of the contract will take place on February the 1st. Is there any discussion? Anybody got any other concerns? Any other thoughts?
Has the letters went out?
No, they wouldn't have gone out. They're not yet, can't, can't move yet.
And there was one more.
Well, we do have time, so that's okay. We do have time, so that's okay.
All right. And you guys are prepared to send the letters out?
No. They can go in a week. That's part of the discussion. I was trying to have you guys... They've been doing, they've been going wrong for 10 years, so we're trying to fix it. We know where the issues are. Some of those will be phone calls, some of them will be meetings, and so many, so many notices. So since we only have a week left to go, we can't get that done. So that's part of me sending you guys a lot of contract for services for some other people to do it. So I was here to have you guys discuss those things, not necessarily approve them because we can't do that, but you can definitely ask questions on what I sent out to you beforehand.
But Clarence, we've known that these letters are due February 1st.
They're not due February 1st.
February 9th.
February 9th.
That's changed?
You haven't, and the June again, no, you're going to have two or three months.
Brian, is that, is that what you told us?
It's really up to how you want to set the deadlines for these payments. Are you talking about the current invoicing, so pay '23, or the ones from pay '20, '21, and '22?
Well, you know, that's a real good question, and I guess we need to have a conversation one-on-one about that. But I was thinking '23.
The collections policy is what you're stating?
Correct.
Needs to be sent out within 30 days according to what the policy said.
Correct.
The policy, what policy?
The collections policy that the attorney wrote that was adopted at the last meeting.
Okay, I would, I would hear that.
So that's what we need to get with you, that's to talk about that. So we can make sure that we're all on the same page.
So for that, there is technically no deadline. You would make those deadlines in the memo you send out in the packets that includes the invoice, and you lay out the deadlines for the submission, and if they were not to pay it, what the repercussions would be.
And you said June is the cutoff?
Normally, most UEAs do June. Most UEAs run on a July to June fiscally year, just because of the property tax payment scheme in May, or sorry, yeah, May and November. Just the ones I've dealt with had done that, and it's worked out very well.
So I heard Clarence say that we may need to talk with someone that has a good handle on how that process actually happens or works, and that is exactly what we will need your expertise on as we move forward. So I know you've given me your card. You said we can call on you. We definitely will be doing that.
Okay. And as far as current billing goes, those invoices have to go out by...
That, since those were retroactive ones, and as you discussed in the executive session that was at recently, the options 1 and 3 that you want to go forward with, you guys, we would need to meet, assuming that my contracts are pre- through the UEA, to determine how you want to go about that process, how you want it memo drafted, how you want to track this information, or do you want to meet with these companies individually to kind of lay it out for them in person instead of an email or a phone call or a letter?
And what has been your experience in getting those customers to feel comfortable about a process like this? Is it in person or is it by...
I have never done this before, like going back to practically. But from my experience dealing with companies going forward with it, I've seen those face-to-face a lot better, just because then there's less questions asked because you're in person, you're not going back and forth with your phone tag, you're not texting, emailing, just waiting for responses. You can get it all done in an hour and minutes.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Clarence, sir, Brian regarding...
His name is Brian.
Our tax recipient partners and what and how they're going to be billed? Any other questions or concerns? Now would be the time. So just for clarity's sake, we do have until June to get all of this information out to potential clients?
Yes.
Or partners?
Yes.
However that's phrased. But this date that we have, that we were told for February was what again? I heard that date more than once about February, something happening in February that needed to be done. There was not a deadline in February?
Not to my knowledge. I know we have the workshop in February, but that's the only thing that I think we discussed. The EDC is running the workshop tax payment.
The collections policy needs to be sent out within 30 days when it was adopted. And then I think the packets were usually sent out in February according to the timeline I had with the easy-to-forms and the EBRs. Just the packets with those forms what's sent out, so you don't have to.
So, so, okay, so again, for clarity's sake, am I hearing that there is a deadline for something or there's not? Just make me understand, because I'm...
I'm going to defer that to Gabby. I am unaware of February deadline.
The collections policy.
The collection policy has 30 days after...
When it was adopted.
From when it was adopted.
January 9th.
From January 9th. And that needs to go to every single...
Company that is a participant currently.
And that, and that particular, see, that's what I, in my head, I remember hearing that, and that particular document has to be created by this board?
Yes.
That goes out. And is that something that after we have it created that you could look at and give us some feedback on what would be appropriate and it's not? Or could you be in the front end of that?
If there's a contract approved, yes, I can walk you guys through that and assist with it.
So, but we set a collection policy this past January? Or on January 9th?
January 9th.
So we impose the deadline on ourselves essentially?
It was included in the policy of, of, I guess.
But really, there isn't a policy that says we have to get it done.
No, there is not anything.
It's not a, it's not a state deadline. Yeah, you could amend it.
We can amend it.
What I'm getting at is you could amend my policy. That's my, my point.
If we felt the need to do that.
Correct. Yeah, I'm just saying, we have an option, should you.
Do we amend that in this meeting?
No.
No.
I would wait till the February.
Well, we got time.
While we have time, I think we need to get to...
Yeah, we do, but we do have time, and that was a real important one, so let's move on. Okay. The proposal for service for S-E-H?
Yes.
Is there any, the floor is open for discussion? And Brian, you could share with us what you're thinking you could probably do for us at this point, since you kind of just went through that review?
Yeah.
If there's something that you would like to share with us that we probably should know at this point, feel free.
I don't think there's much that I haven't discussed already. As we mentioned at the prior meeting with the issues and how we talked about options 1 and 3, I think our first step with the past actions would be to discuss how we want to draft the memo, how do you want to approach these companies, and how are we going to put a tracking system together in order to monitor these credits or refunds or however you guys agree with the company to go forward. Then after that, I would suggest then looking at the pay '23 invoices, or even when you meet with the company at that time, if those are already ready, that you present that to them as well. Then you can show them this is what you do this year with the past discrepancies. We would take it off, so you either may owe zero, or you may owe less than what is currently on the pay '23 invoice.
Has all service been rendered?
From our original contract?
Yes.
For the audit, yes, that has been done, and we are sending an invoice to you guys, or I think to the EDC, correct? We're invoicing that this week.
I think we brought it up, we brought it everything?
The final report?
It was just the preparation.
That preparation? That was it?
Yes.
Okay.
So to go forward, it will be, it will cost us additional, correct?
Yes.
Do you have a proposal?
It's all in here.
And the amount of $65,000 is not to exceed. We just like to build in a budget just in case there's extra services you may require, because it's always easier to already have it built in than to continuously come back and keep getting more contracts approved.
Would you have a problem having a workshop with us?
I think that's under the program consulting of personnel expenses?
Personnel.
Yeah. And we do have in the scope to do any workshops as well, so that would be included in this contract.
So I guess I'm asking, do, are you able to provide that scope?
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't put anything in the scope that I can do this.
No, I mean to provide to the board members to review.
It's in your...
Here, you got the email.
In the email, I understand.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't aware of this.
No, thank you.
In, in the contract is that, I think there's 15 items in the scope of work that I can cover under the contract. So that includes the prior invoicing, current invoicing, facilitating workshops that may be requested, any data research that may be needed, such as looking at all the businesses currently located in the zone, pulling, building permit data from the city to see if there's any companies that are expanding that you may want to get in front of.
Okay, stop right there. So am I hearing you say that you actually can go to the permit office and pull those permits?
I don't think there would be an issue.
Have you ever done that before?
Not in Michigan City, I'm not done with it.
Okay.
That'd be a problem, Scott?
I'm sorry.
For any permits?
Permit for like, for like a...
So say...
I think that permits over like $1,000.
Oh.
He's on our board.
I don't see why. I mean, I'm not gonna, yeah, we would just kind of, yeah, 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 it'll be fine.
Yeah, I know, pulling a permit doesn't happen, snap your finger, it takes a little bit of time.
Yeah, I could imagine it could be.
Is commercial industrial?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll move to table this until we have further discussion, seeing what's needed and what's not needed. I think we need to get a director, an interim director, and we need to follow the lead of the director at this point. That's just my belief. That'd be my belief. I just moved to table this until we have a workshop and until we can get an interim director.
There's been a motion to table this discussion. Is there a second? Motion fails. We need to continue to have this discussion about why it's important for us to have the right information go to the person that is going to probably need it more than we will. So I understand why he's saying that. So with that being said, we can continue to have a conversation with you, if that's okay?
Yeah.
And, and if you guys want to put, if you, whatever you guys want to do, we need to decide it now. Let me just say that. And Rodney has been very clear to table it, and we've said, and that motion fails. So let the records show that that motion did fail. More discussion on the floor. Go.
I just think that we are interfering with the day-to-day of our director that we will ultimately put in either temporary or permanently. I think we need to follow the lead of our, the person that we're going to put in the helm, and I just think it's wrong. I just think that we should be, we shouldn't already handicap someone with bad decision-making, our decision-making, without that person having input in this, so...
I mean, I don't think you're going to handicap, what he's presenting is pure dollars and cents.
It's data.
It's data. Like, it has to, that has to get fixed before we even know, have a handle on what we're collecting, what we're putting out there. That has to get fixed. And that's just data.
And I respect my...
And I get, I get, we have to go meet with people and talk with them. I get that piece of it. That's the hard part, but we got to get that fixed.
So, so let me ask the question. When has this process ever occurred? That you were fixing data for, for this UEZ? Has that ever occurred before?
No. Last, at the end of last year was the first time I've been engaged to work with Clarence under the guidance of the UEA system with these findings that Gabby found, but it's late last year.
But this is consistent with other UEZ, UEAs that you guys have worked with?
The invoicing portion or the discrepancies from the past?
Touche, my friend.
Well, I suppose you tell me.
I have not come across this discrepancy ever before, but I do think that if we set some sort of guidelines, I think I can help shepherd you guys through this. I do have 10 years of experience in it. I'm not going to claim I'm an expert, even though some say I am. But with me already dealing with these deductions at county level, since I do calculate them for the auditor's office, I already kind of lay at the land of what it's going to look like before it even comes to the board here, which is already done, feathered your cap, because that's less work that you're heading to do on the backend, because I'm already doing it for another client of mine.
Let me ask you, just because we're, we're in a time of uncertainty. We've got a lot of moving pieces. Would you be okay with a provisional contract for a period of time until we get a director in?
Yeah, so I, I can modify this, or I can break it down with a cost for each item on the scope of work, and you guys can cherry pick which ones you want right now, and I can modify the budget for the contract, and then in the future, if there's, you guys are happy with the work that I've done for you, and then we can discuss an extended contract or how do we want to build that scope of work.
I'd be good about that.
What if our director can do the work, or some of the work that he's proposing? I don't know. I just, I'm uncomfortable with it. I just prefer to have a workshop with him and with the, with our director and take the advice from our director, but whatever you guys want to go with, let's do it.
Well, I, I agree. I feel like we have to understand what our structure is before we can, because I feel like we're just stabbing in the dark here without really knowing how to proceed. So we should establish what the structure is. We have a board, and now we need a director, and we need an operations person. So, and we need an office, we need to know where those files are going to go, we need to get him on board, whatever, with whatever he needs to do. But I don't know if this is now the time to do that, or if we need to have a workshop, but let's, let's get our, let's get ourselves organized, get our house in order, and then let's decide where we go.
So, so that brings me back to Brian, who we, we appreciate you and definitely need your expertise as we go through this period. I'm just wondering, why can't we revisit this in two weeks or three weeks? What, what's the big deal?
Don't say that.
The only thing you'd be missing would be the, that's why I was getting at you. The deadline we kind of imposed on ourselves, we'd only, we're not going to miss through that one.
So we just need to go ahead and amend the deadline?
Right.
And, and then be done with that? That's, that's something we've done, so we can fix that. That shouldn't be a big deal, but I understand again that we want to make sure that we're moving in the right vein. I think Rodney's on to something, and just getting a clear understanding of where we're going before we commit to $65,000.
I see.
Period.
Oh, yeah, no, I completely get it.
So... Time in the next two to four weeks to have a discussion with us?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Workshop?
Like you said, we need to get our house in order. Then we can go, then we can go out, then we can do whatever we got to do.
Then I'd motion to table this discussion until at least...
There's a motion on the floor to table this discussion. Is there a second?
Hold on a second. He put a time limit on it, so...
He did, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
So at least the February meeting, and then we reevaluated then.
At that time, should we have a director, interim, is we, are we participating, are we, do we think that's going to happen tonight? Because I thought that was one of the...
It is one of the things tonight we need to move forward.
Okay, I'm, I second.
All in favor? Show of hands. All goes opposed? Those abstentions? Let the record show that ayes have it, that the motion passes to table this until February 20th meeting, which, Brian, I know that we'll have lots of conversations prior to that.
Sounds good.
All right.
Brian, and maybe, I've had some changes in my correspondence, my emails, so maybe it's on me, but can you send your, your scope, your full proposal?
Yeah, just providing your email address, more than that.
Thank you. Yeah, I haven't gotten it either.
Okay. Yeah, if everyone wants to give me their emails, I'll send it out when I get home soon.
Perfect. Thank you. The advertisement of the UEZ Open Position and Contractor, open for discussion.
Open position, what is the position?
It's the interim position until we identify an individual to take over.
As director?
As director.
Okay.
Open for discussion.
And how is it advertised? How do we, how do we do this? Who's, and who's doing it?
The city will more than likely, I will work with to make sure the advertisement is done through the city website, and then, of course, we will work with the news dispatch to make sure that...
Probably have to work with Tatnisha to post it on Indeed. They'll probably bill us for it, which is fine. But that's who I'd work with.
I think legally, it just has to be in one of our local media newspapers for X amount of time. I believe it's 10 days. I believe that's the limit, but I'm not for sure on that.
I'll channel that too.
And who does, who creates the job description, or does it already exist?
I will move that, and whatever we do, it will have a scope of the service, so we need to have that. We must have that.
That's, that's easy to do.
Yeah, so I was, I was wondering, so who writes the, the advertisement?
Well, we can actually work on that as a team.
Sure.
I can see Darren and I have been doing some writing for this board all the time, so that's not a problem for him and I to get together and then share it with everyone. That's not a problem at all.
And anyone else to contribute to?
Absolutely.
Doesn't have to be close off.
Yeah, the more the better. Actually, we can do it and get a draft and send it out to everyone, and if they think, you know, that they want to make some additions to it or adjust it at all, they can always let us know. But remember, none of these emails need to be telling people what to do. Ever.
And then... Do you feel we can have a job description within the time of the next...
We can have a job description by tomorrow. I'm sure you got enough time to send me.
For you, Tommy, always.
Yeah, we can get that done.
And then what about the, we talked about Gabrielle being like an operations person? And that's in addition to the director?
That's an interim operations person for now until we identify a director. And she was, is more than happy to, are willing to apply for the position, but we will definitely be putting it up for application, be it's...
So she could apply, you could apply for either one, right?
She could.
Okay.
Well, I think there's just one position.
It's actually supposed to be two, but I think we're looking at one right now.
It's supposed to, according to...
To the contract, that he, that we had a conference originally, it was a coordinator and the executive director, if I remember correctly, was two people on that third line.
Does the, does the workload?
No, no.
Does the job and the workload require two people? Is it that work-intensive that it requires two people?
I can't answer that question, but I know that for the next three months is our low season. We don't have very much going on right now, so this is all timely. We can move on some things and get some things in place so that when things start to kick off in late March, we can be in a better position. So I believe that, and Clarence, you can correct me, for now, from what I'm seeing, it looks as if just one person should be able to manage this from now until the end of March.
Mr. Chair, Patty?
Yes.
Is it Brian?
Yes.
What would be your recommendation? Is this a two-person job, or one person can handle this right now?
It depends. If my contract is approved, one-person job. If it is not approved, you will definitely need two people.
Maybe three.
Maybe.
Thank you.
So you're picking up some of the workload then?
Yes.
Okay.
He has that expertise to do that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And so if we can, we could at least start out with one person, and then if it becomes too burdensome for one, we can talk about with that director, operations person, hiring somebody else.
Absolutely. I move to, to make Gabrielle the interim director. After we find out what the fee is going to be, I don't know, give me, are we going to talk about a contract? Or do we have a contract ready for her?
We do not have a contract ready for her. We will probably, not, no probably, we will revisit that. And we do have time, and I think by the February meeting, we should be able to, or is that too late? Somebody tell me, do we want to move faster?
I mean, we have time, because you, you're just missing, keep in mind, we don't have to get, just keep in mind, we don't have that deadline. we don't have that deadline on us imposed.
Right.
So I keep throwing it out there, just keep that in mind.
And it's, no, no, it's good to keep that in mind, and it's also good to get her started, too, so that we can be on top of things. So I understand where you're going with that. So if we create the, the, the contract based around your salary when you were working there and at EDC, we then could say that we are continuing with the same salary amount that you were receiving at EDC in the position, and then that could eliminate us being.
I think contracts need to be talked about in the executive section.
It has to be.
And I think that we're going a little bit too far. I will ask, if I may, I'm sorry for the motion.
No, go ahead, because it is.
Gabrielle, would you be willing to work for us until we can get a contract ironed out, not to, not to go past thirty days?
Just give that to Brian. It's for the scope of work.
Change it to fifteen.
Well, when do we, when do we, when, when is our next meeting?
February twentieth.
Twenty eighth, right now.
Things will happen. We don't have a, I don't even know who our lawyer is at this point. And I, I, we gotta be fair to everyone. I'm just saying, at least thirty days to work on this. But I do know when we talk about contracts, personnel issues, that has to be done in a different setting.
It does.
And it should not be done here. That's just my.
Although this was on this agenda, it might have not been appropriate. But I understand why folks were wanting to do it.
Yes, we had to do this. Um, I, I, again, my motion's on the table. She's willing to do this until we can get the contract ironed out and have another meeting to get this done.
And will we retro pay then?
Yes, we will, we will definitely reimburse her for the time she has served waiting on this contract to be done. Is that the question? Yes. So I move to just make her an interim director until, until we get this finalized, with the understanding that we are gonna put this out to bid, the, the job, with, with the scope of work. So there I'm at. I'm with that.
She would have to put in an application in.
She would have to put in an application. I second that notion.
That thirty days, all right.
All in favor? Show of hands. Aye. Goes opposed? Those abstentions.
Who's writing this? Oh, you guys are gonna write this?
We're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Eyes have it. Motion carries. We will get, you will be inundated with a lot of emails over the next.
My other question is, she'll have to provide a scope of what she expects to get paid though as well.
Oh, yes, that's where, yeah, she's willing to set that to aside until we can get an attorney and they can get the things done. It's just interim right now.
To keep moving.
Yeah, so we, we gotta keep this going.
And thank you for agreeing to do that.
Yeah, thanks, Gabby. Uh, speaking of an attorney, so do we have somebody in mind for what we're gonna ask?
We do. We, we've made some calls, but we are not getting calls back like we thought we would. But we are looking for business attorneys, fellows who specialize in business.
All right.
And so far, we're staying local, but we're open to going outside of the city.
Would Brian have any recommendations on that?
I spoke with two of them in Lake County, but they're not interested in traveling this far. They want to keep it in house.
I might have, I might have somebody to reach out to if they live in the community, actually, I think within the.
Urban.
The zone. Um, they practice in Porter, but, um, we might be able, I'll reach out. Okay.
Will you reach out to Anthony Novak yet?
Anthony Novak was not a name that we received.
Okay.
How about Dan Greenquist?
I can reach out to Anthony myself. I just ask, I can.
Would you please?
I have no problem.
Absolutely. Um, that, that would be great. The more input and connections that board members can make to identify the things that we need to make us successful, please bring it forward. It's a team effort. It's the only way we're gonna get through these next four months and be where we want to be.
Where we are on the agenda.
This will be the last item on the agenda.
That's it?
Nope, this last one. This discussion of termination, the POC and the process. Oh, uh, because we're not doing the oath, this is, so it's that last item. The discussion of the termination, which, it just really comes back to where Clarence has said, where stuff will be delivered, uh, when it will be delivered, uh, who will then receive it, and all of those items we do have.
Contact.
Information on, I'm gonna submit that to you guys in writing, so you'll have it in front of you, Lily and Clarence. Right now, the support that we're getting from the city as far as housing all of our documents, it will be here, um, in a locked room until the next steps take place. And we, and again, we are getting good support with that. So I, again, I'll send out an email to the fact about how that's gonna all transpire on February first. Is there any questions about the documents being?
Discussion. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Clarence, are you, are you uncomfortable with how we're gonna track?
We are putting together everything we have in our provision, and the goals are, it's already at once for you guys to kind of pick it up. We don't want to have it tripped the way it was tripped to us.
Yes, correct.
Two months, six months, one year later. So we're trying to get everything we have in the provision and figure out, okay, are we missing anything? So the list you have there, the best we know, as of today, we might not have the more time to make sure we're not missing anything, something electronic. So the physical part is the easier part.
So how we, how, forgive me, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So the physical part is the easier part. That is the documents that are, uh, one file draw has something, two interfile boards. And then we've got a bunch of, well, not a bunch, we've got a whole flash drive. It has all the old stuff on it. Stuff I don't know, here, lost on there, so you guys can have that. So we're, we're trying to make sure all of the electronic stuff is put together, like one flash drive, two flash.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
So, okay, the goal is to give it to you all at once. And if anybody wants to go through it, the ones I know, I can look at the stuff from the past ten years. I have no clue, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
And finger wave first is gonna run up quick, and when you're trying to put those kind of documents that you're talking about on flash drive, that might be timely, so.
No, we're, we're, we're probably be ready on Friday, the, the third, better, the kid that was, was about week, just make sure we have everything ready and before it's still scattered.
And if it doesn't, just let us know, because again, that, that can be kind of timely. I've seen that.
We have most of it electronically. It's a matter of making sure it's all at once.
Okay.
So that's the issue. It's sitting out there.
Okay.
And then we've been forwarding stuff. The UEZ has an email of use for like fifteen years. So whatever we find on there, we just forward it to that email address. One of the things you guys will have to consider is get a phone number ASAP, that you guys own the cell phone number, because people are calling us, but some of us are referring to somebody.
Absolutely.
If you have a phone number that you guys own, um, that's whoever is your new director, whatever, has, has, can have, can answer a phone, or they can take messages, so, and you have to own that number. So if they come up with changes, we want the number to change.
That, that's their first assignment, or your third or fifth.
The, the phone number, the.
The email's been there for ten years, so we've got, we've got, we've forwarded that. Uh, we're forwarding everything to that right now.
Facebook accounts.
He's got.
Darren does.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was, I was just suggesting, with these operational issues and the transfer of documents, you and, and Gabby, you can work, work together and just, I guess, uh, the next meeting, provide updates on, on that. And I know Clarence and his team will work with us to, to get everything.
We've got most of it. We have the one missing.
You guys are crap for space. You want to be out there.
Oh, yeah.
Couple things, though. The key to the mailbox at the post office, you have that, and we get that transferred over. And then as far as the check and the checking account, you're still holding on that, to that until February first. So we don't know what's gonna transpire between now and then that may require Skylar and I coming in. I don't see anything happening, but for the record, it's gonna stay with you until February first. And then when we come over, we will, of course, do it, make sure everything is done properly then, dealing with the city hall.
Skylar, you got a side dog on it? We'll have to do that, Dan. I'm, but, go ahead. That's, it's fine.
Well, it, it's, it's okay where it is, because nothing can happen without us.
It's better if it stays.
Yeah, just keep it there and keep it clean. It's okay. And he both, we both are going, um, and we both have communicated clearly about what needs to be done in regards to the, the checking account. There's two signatures on it.
I, I'd put out a, a, a motion then that, uh, documents will be transferred, uh, no later than February fifth.
Thirdly, fine. I mean, we, we, we're almost there. We've been tracking stuff and putting stuff together, so we're almost there. But we just want to make sure it's done all at once, and not triple, triple, triple.
How much time you, you will need Clarence to make sure that everything's done?
It's a matter of knowing what's where and what's, where it's at, and not forgetting. And so we spent the last week or so, well, this is over there, this is over there, so we're trying to put it all in one room, so.
Will February fifth be a adequate time for you to be?
Yeah. Or six, every time.
Six.
That's not a Sunday. Friday or Monday, I'm good.
With that time limitation, I will second the motion.
Oh, I'll take, I'll stay, I'll stay.
Okay. All in favor? Show of hands. Aye. Goes opposed? Those abstentions. Let the notes show that that motion carried. Um, for the fifth or the sixth, I missed it. Let's say the fifth. Let's say February fifth, all documented. Okay, so February third.
Okay.
February third. February third. I'm sorry.
We're not gonna be there.
No, the fifth. February third, everything hopefully will be transferred. If it's not, no big deal.
Man, for most part, the checks, we can also have the key, give it all at a date. But we want to make sure we, we know where the files are, and so when we transfer them, you can say, this is over there, this is there, but there. Because we didn't have that kind of.
Okay. That would be appreciated.
I'm gonna just, I'm gonna dismiss myself.
Okay.
And Larry had a question for me, not about this, but it's.
Is there any?
Ask me my question, come back.
You're okay. Is there any other questions or concerns on the floor? Because I think we've come to the end of this part of it, unless Clarence has anything else he wants to share.
I want to share something.
Go ahead.
I just want to be, I don't think this has nothing to do with Clarence at all. The last administration left us in a mess, and it wasn't Clarence. The perception has gotten out there where, um, there's so much legal stuff going on, it's, it's outrageous. I don't know, I wasn't briefed, I can barely hear on Zoom, but I know Clarence didn't have nothing to do with, uh, what the other person did before he came in. This is unfortunate event. We'll learn from it. We, we will improve.
And it's not person, it's persons.
I just don't wanna.
Yeah, you can't put it on a person. Right, that's right.
I don't know what it is, but I'm.
We don't know. We don't know.
I want to thank you, Clarence, for the work you did do with us. There was times where some of the meetings weren't even taking place, but we did get, we did accomplish some things. I'm glad this is mutual, um, and we are, we still got our friendship anyway. I don't, I just wanted to say thank you. And that's it for me.
Anyone else?
Uh, I have a comment about the attorneys you're looking at. Uh, I know you mentioned business attorneys. I would not recommend a business attorney. I would look at an attorney who has municipal government background.
With what?
Municipal government.
Municipal government.
Since the UVA board is technically a closet board of the city, um, it is a municipal board. I think you should look at someone like that. I may even recommend reaching out to the LaPorte UVA. See who their attorney is, just see if they're interested, potentially even South Bend. I know it's a little out there, but it's still close enough, and they have a very.
It's not that far.
Well-off UVA, so it may benefit you guys for each other.
And maybe even Hammond.
Yeah, uh, that was the one that, who was out there, he doesn't want to come.
Don't want to come? Okay.
I try.
All right, we'll do South Bend and LaPorte. We've already had communications with them. It's a good, good, good suggestion. Thank you, Brian. And please feel free, if you think of something, and Clarence, that we need to know as we try to move forward, don't give it to us. We want to succeed.
Oh, I know.
We do. We really do. We want to make the city proud. Is there any other concerns, any other questions, any other comments?
Well, I just want to thank Clarence and his organization for, for the, the guidance, the support that you've given the board to, to this point. You know, I think we, we both have the city's best interest in mind. I think we're, we as a board, we're up for a challenge. I think we're up for it. I think we have a, a great group. And I hope that we can come back in six months or a year and, and be supportive of, of each other. So thank you for, for your guidance and excited to see what you guys are, what you, you're doing. And hopefully you're excited to see what, what we're, we're prepared to do as well.
Any questions? Any other concerns?
Move to a chair.
This meeting is a jam.
Thank you.